Hello everyone, my name is Terrence Hurd and I'm running for the school board here in the city of Buffalo. My position I'm running for is a school board member at large because I'm feeling the best qualified candidate for this position. The reason why I'm the best qualified candidate is because I have more experience working with children than any other candidate that's running for the school board, other than the seated candidates already. One reason why I ran for this position in the school board is because of my passion for the kids. I feel as if these kids are my heart and everything that, you know, that they do, you know, I look at them, they look up to us and we have to give the kids the best opportunity to succeed in their lives. I passionately feel this due to my past experience. I was a teacher in the Buffalo Public Schools for many years. I taught in grade school and I taught at Seneca High School. And during these times, kids, um, they adapted to me and I adapted to them. I want to make sure that they had the best possible education and I want to make sure they had the best possible outcome to succeed in their lives. Uh, Buffalo, Buffalo schools have been good to me. I'm also a graduate of Buffalo Public Schools at Seneca High School. In which it was a time I can honestly say that I never thought I would graduate. I never thought that I would, would become anything. It was a time in my life where, where growing up in the Buffalo Public Schools, being in the neighborhood with gangs, being in the neighborhood with a lot of bad influences, neighborhood with drugs. I, I seen my friends get killed and I seen other people lose their lives around me and I didn't think that I would have a chance to succeed. I never thought I would go to college. I never thought I would become a football player. Never thought that my, my athletic skills will amount to anything because I never thought I'll have for tomorrow. So, here I am today and I'm proud to say that I'm running for Buffalo Public School Board Member at Large. My past experience as a school teacher leads me to be the most qualified person for this position and I believe that it propels me above every other, uh, member that's running for the position. Now, a little bit about my background. After I left the Buffalo Public Schools, I became a worker at General Motors down in Atlanta, Georgia. There I was a supervisor, but after a little while, I felt that that position wasn't for me. I found myself in a line working with people, but while I was there, I embedded myself into the union so I could help other workers there so they can come to, uh, you know, better solutions. I, I felt that there was a lot of discrimination going on and I wanted to help the workers, uh, fight for their rights and their legal battles. So I left General Motors and I became a correctional officer. Why did I become a correctional officer? I became a correctional officer because I wanted to see where it was going. Before, before my transition to correctional officer back in Buffalo, I was a business owner. I owned a couple of restaurants. You might know them, Paradise, uh, partners with Buster Restaurants and I had Appetize Restaurant here in the city of Buffalo. And from that time on, I felt that there was a systemic, systemic need to help these kids. These kids were coming to my restaurant and I felt passion for them. We gave them food because they didn't have any money, no food to eat. Uh, talked to the parents. Parents asked, can you please give my child some, uh, some blessings today? And next week they'll, they'll give me money in return. I never asked for the money in return, but I started a program where I was working with kids and I said, okay, you bring me an A back in your report card, you get a free steak sandwich. And I thought that would help project them, propel them to do better in school. Once we did that, the end of the market period came around and these kids, they was coming back to the restaurant crying. They didn't get any As. They didn't receive any As in their classes. So I said, okay, you have a B. Anybody with a B average, you can come and get a free sandwich. The next market period they came, it was mixture of some Bs but mostly Cs and a couple of Fs. So, I felt compassion for these, for these, for these young people that's in our community, so I gave them free food anyway. So I said, maybe it's another chance for me to be able to help them. So, that's when I started teaching. Went into the teaching career and that's, and I felt that it was a need to, to find an avenue because they're at the high school level, these kids wasn't getting enough there. And the grade school level, they still wouldn't get enough education. Now, so as I move on, as we talked about previously, my career as a correctional officer, now I get to see hands-on what happens to these children where they don't receive the proper education. They don't receive the proper nourishment in their life and they don't have an adult guiding them correctly. Where they have teachers who not propel, you know, the kid to do their best. And some teachers who worked hard with these kids and the kids just can't seem to catch on. They just can't seem to get it. So, then I was promoted in six months' time from a correctional officer to the assistant to the deputy warden there in Atlanta, Georgia, Metro State Prison. And I did that because of a program I wrote. It was a program I wrote called GIBS. That's a acronym for Georgia incarcerated voices and encouraging students. With the GIBS program, what it did, we took a classroom setting, but we went to an auditorium and we put prisoners right there on the stage in auditoriums. When we put these prisoners on the stage in auditoriums, we closed the curtains, the drapes, so that no one could see the prisoners. And the kids came in normal fashion. When the kids come into an auditorium, kind of rowdy, kind of loud, playing with each other and I ordered the teachers and the principals not to say anything to the kids. Let them act the way they're gonna act. Then, we pulled the drapes back. Then all of a sudden, you got total silence. The kids, their eyes and attention is focused on the stage. When you see six to eight prisoners lined up on the stage, sitting there cheering, just like I'm sitting right now myself. And you got correctional officers standing behind them with shotguns and rifles and pistols on their sides. And now, the program GIBS was designed to, not like the Stair Straight program here that's incorporated in New York State in the previous past, but the Stair program was designed to actually have that one-on-one relationship with these kids for this moment in time. Where they can talk to them. The prisoner talked about where was they at in their life, the good times they had in their life. They talked about the schools they went to, the problems they had in schools, then where they went wrong at. They talked about when they took that straight neural path and they turned the curve. And when they turned that curve, they locked them in prison. Uh, some of these prisoners, uh, was prostitutes, some of them were pimps, some of them was drug, drug dealers. Some of these prisoners, uh, they, uh, got into gang warfare. So, we had to, they talked to them and said, okay, now, these prisoners were happy to tell them, to try to encourage these kids not to follow that same path, direction they was going in. So this was a great program that we had with GIBS and, uh, they incorporated there in the state of Georgia. After the GIBS program, um, the governor of Georgia asked me to step up and do another thing. Then I became a court liaison for the state of Georgia. They moved me to their probation department and as a probation officer, I supervise over 10,000 felony convicted felons. These felons were a array of different type of crimes they had in their life and they had a array of different felonies. So, they might have been one time, two time, three time, four time, to 10 time felons that I'm supervising. These are called hardened criminals and I can see the path where our kids can go into. They can one day be these hardened criminals, just as, as these other people has become. Now, as a probation officer, I had to supervise them, had to talk to them in peer groups and I had to, uh, find out what they were doing, visit homes, and then I was moved to the sex offense squad to where I had to go visit sex offenders. And we filmed them, went to homes, raided the homes and find materials that was inappropriate and we had to rearrest these, arrest these offenders all over again. Then, I was moved to the court liaison position. The court liaison position was where I became like an attorney to where I gave my best verdict to, uh, judges to decisions whether to decide they're gonna find a person guilty, not guilty. Uh, I made recommendations to the judge on which way the case should go. I did over 40,000 felony cases. Now, these 40,000 felony cases, my recommendations were suspended sentence. My recommendation might have been house arrest. My recommendation might have been prison. It might have been day reporting center. It might have been diversion center. It might have been ankle monitoring or it might have been a suspended sentence. A lot of cases that we put on our first offenders cases, uh, these police went ahead so that we could give this person another opportunity to make a difference in their lives and change. As a court liaison, I built special relationship with all the judges, all the, uh, circuit court judges, the, um, some federal judges, special relationship with all the DA's, attorneys, that's, that's located within the area. So, as we move on from that, this gives me the most experience and make me the most qualified person to enter into, uh, the school board here in Buffalo. Because I know what these kids needs. I can see the path that they're gonna go in. And my desire is to, is to make them and help them, uh, push programs that's gonna help them in life that they're trying to end up in these type of situations. The governor then asked me to go to a day reporting center where I supervised over 250 convicted felons and these are felons that had three to four convictions. In the state of Georgia, when you have three felony convictions, that's all that matters to me that they can actually put you in prison for life, for the rest of your life. I had 18-year-old girls who had three or more felony convictions and we had to supervise. I do not want our kids to end up like these, like these women and these young men that end up in juvenile facilities and places where they can't get any help, but be locked up and locked up in cages. This goes for all creeds, all colors, that, that, uh, on a, that's in a spectrum. We have white, black, Hispanic, uh, gang members. So, it, this right here reflects in every person, every child, every school and every household. After coming from that, I returned back to Buffalo. I returned back to Buffalo and I felt I could make a difference here in Buffalo from everything that I learned. As I returned to Buffalo, I bought myself in a lot of different programs. My wife Nina and I has incorporated ourselves into the, into the Buffalo, um, school board. What we did was, uh, with our positions at General Motors, we were able to take monies and help fund projects that for kids here in Buffalo. Uh, some of the projects that we funded was...
Well, one of the programs was Success Like Me was General Motors partner with, um, Community Foundation of Greater Buffalo and you were a great liaison and a great facilitator in helping us, uh, through those programs. And we were able to take students across the country from Detroit to New York to Toronto.
To Washington.
So they can learn about STEM careers. And so those were, that's one of the programs, um, that we were involved in.
That's, that's under leadership of Jennifer Parker and, uh, the Buffalo Public Schools. And with the Success Like Me program, as she said, that we, um, actually took kids, we flew kids to Washington and bused them to Detroit and to New York City. And what we did, we showed them that people of high positions that look like us, that's, that's the head of General Motors, that's the head of other 400, 500 companies. And we use this as a platform to, to help and propel them, you know, so they can make good decisions in life. That's the whole thing. We want to change the climate of the school system. We want to change the climate of the schools. We want to change the climate of the teachers. So what we gotta start also by changing the climates of the attitudes of the children. Now, these children came back, you know, and, and I heard one girl testify, testified to us and said that, um, that she thought she was gonna end up pregnant in life, but, but now she's made a decision in her life and made changes and she's gonna be a leader and she's gonna be a supervisor of some people. So, let's be have great positive stories, you know, from these young kids. And these are the problems and the things that the kids face in today's society. And this is some, how, some of the ways that we can address them. Another program, and my wife sits on the board for Epic. You want to explain more about Epic?
No. Every person is worth his children.
With, with Epic, um, with Epic, uh, it uses people to encourage children to help, to help them in their goals in life. So, we incorporated and partnered with them. We also partnered with the Girls and Boys Club of Buffalo.
Willie Hush Jones, Education and Sports Program. So we can go on and on and on. But lots of community outreach, lots of community programs that Terrence has been involved in and been a liaison and been a facilitator and, and helped me along the way and, uh, represented the community well.
Another program quickly is, um, the WIT program. With Reverend Gene Copeland, we went with WIT program. We actually took 100 men and took them to the school system. With this 100 men, uh, we took them and apologized to the men of the school, the boys of the school, and we talked to them at MST High School and told them that we gonna have a better outcome and better path and mentoring them and that program still exists to this day. And we also, uh, with the, with the WIT program, a couple of months later, we also got 100 women to come inside the auditorium and mentor these women. And what they did, uh, we had the talk show owner, radio owner Sheila Brown, and she actually did live, uh, internships with the, with the girls and the guys. Uh, we actually helped them with their prom. We gave them prom shoes and prom dresses. Got their hair done. The boys got their hair cut and the girls got their hair done. This is all done by people in services of our community just by working together to help for the success of these kids. Another program that I'm, that I'm associated with and helped write was the Breaking Barriers program. Uh, we helped, helped facilitate this program where we got over 100 young men last year. We got them together in the Buffalo school system and we mentored them throughout the whole summer and it's still going on today. Uh, last month, we had, we had our second, a second listing of the kids. There's another 100 kids that's came into us. So now we have 200 young men that we're mentoring, that we're mentoring to the future. So these are just some of the things that we do, some of the programs that I think will make the better school system that we can place in the school system that, that I, that, that's working. It's things that's working. Like I said before, we want to change the climate. We wanna, we want to build relationships.
Those's one or two of maybe the, um, initiatives that you think that you would like to incorporate, you know, if the people allow you to, um, be elected as a school board at-large member.
If I'm elected, one program I'd like to do, we gotta think innovatively. Uh, we gotta think about programs that can help the children. I went inside the high school, uh, last, two weeks ago and there was a fight that broke out. It was two, three girls jumping one girl and we intervened to help, to stop that fight. And we broke the fight up, but it was violent. The security guard had a little tussle with the girl. She, he couldn't control her. She was strong and, and, uh, he was a little older. So, one thing I'd like to do and I've thought very deeply with is to make police satellite stations inside the troubled schools. Anytime you have a troubled school, that we can put a police satellite station, put community police officers that operate right from that school. They can have a car outside and they can actually do their patrol and everything, but they can report back to that school to where that's, that, that door is gonna be open 24 hours a day for police officers. Anybody that's in their neighborhood that's in trouble, they got another place to come to for help. And also the kids, with that community police officer, they have relationship with the kids. Sometimes these kids are scared to go to school. From being a teacher, I know scared, uh, kids have told me they scared to get on the bus. They scared to ride the bus after school and coming to school. Some kids come to school purposely because they don't want to ride the special bus because they know it's gonna be fights. They know it's gonna be dramas, gonna be drugs on these buses. We want to try to stop that, you know. We have to change the climate. We have to think of innovative ways to do it. With the community police officers, now they can have relationship with the kids if they got a problem at home, a problem on their street, a problem with drug dealers. I heard a principal tell me a couple of weeks ago that there was a raid over, by a house over at Grover High School. Right at the time, it was a federal raid while at the time, the kids were going to school. We gotta rethink things. We gotta, we gotta make a safe zones for these kids.
What was another one you were telling me about, um, about partnering with the colleges and how to, and so we know that sometimes the media and everyone talks about our kids being bad, Buffalo Public Schools, but we have some great kids out there as students as well. So what were you thinking?
We, we have great kids. We have great school system. Buffalo is one of the best school systems in the country. I truly believe that we have some of the best teachers in the country right here in Buffalo. We have the best educators right here in Buffalo. We have to utilize them to their best. We have some of the best colleges in Buffalo. So I want to initiate a program if I'm elected and to, as a member of the Buffalo Board. And, um, this, this, this right here is very important. I want you to listen very closely. We want to take a high school and we want a college, an area college to adopt a high school. That's the program I'm gonna initiate if I serve on the board. What we want is say, South Park High School. So maybe we can incorporate that and try, try to build a relationship with Hillburg Bonner Venture College. So now that could be South Park, uh, Hillburg Bonner Venture College. We can, um, build a relationship with, say Riverside. Riverside can become Riverside ECC High School. Sorry, High School. And then we can build a relationship, say, with Seneca High School. We building a relationship right now with Seneca where I'm speaking with the, with the principal of Seneca about incorporating that school and to, uh, to working with, uh, North End Corridor, which my wife sits on the board of. And also corporate that with ECMC so we can make that to a mechanical slash medical high school. They that close to one another. Why can't we build that relationship so we can have a high school that's gonna suit, that be suitable for the nursing field, for the doctor field. We can build doctors out of our children.
I think you're calling it each one teach one, right?
Yes, the each one teach one program.
Uh, and then there was some other stuff here. Thinking of Dr. Cash, um, he has some great, um, programs out there, initiatives out there, strategies. I think there are a couple out there that you agree with as well.
Uh, I, I believe a lot of Dr. Cash's initiatives. Uh, one initiative is, as of right now, 80% of the children that's in Buffalo Public Schools are African-American. So, if we must work to bring more African-American educators into the Buffalo Public School Systems. We understand that it's a cultural divide within the schools and we, and for some reason, the African-American schools that's targeted were, is abundantly African-Americans. Uh, that's where a lot of the trouble happens at. So by targeting these schools, we want to make sure that we can have people that relate, that relate to these students, that they can have real relationships and one-on-one and also do diversity training among all teachers. That they take mandatory diversity training so that they can work with these kids and understand these kids. Everybody come from different parts of life. That's no secret. But we need, it's no secret that we need to work together to help build and build better characters, you know, amongst the teachers, build trust among the teachers and build better relationships so that we can have the best possible outcome for our kids. So...
Yep. There was one last question I have before we wrap this up too. Um, you were talking about, um, how some...
I'm not wrapping up.
Okay. Well, okay. So I have one more question. How about that? You were talking about how, um, sometimes kids are labeled if they go to an alternative school. So, you had some thoughts about that?
Growing up, and I'm sure everybody heard that, that these kids go to alternative schools. You got kids, they, they label as being bad, non-productive, uh, fighters, uh, don't go to school and they send them to a place called alternative school. I think the name alternative has a very negative condemnation upon our students and our kids. Growing up, saying that you're going to an alternative school is gonna have a negative, negative minds, a negative mindset within their lives. So, what we want to do is rename the school.
That's what you were thinking?
You were, you were talking to my ears.
No, I'm sorry.
Okay. Okay, uh, rename the school. We want to name it, uh, School of Excellence. We want to, uh, propel these kids and let them know that when you, when you get kicked out of the school. At Seneca, I was, uh, one of the people that was charge of conflict resolution where there was a fight breakout and believe me, in front of Seneca High School, when I taught, we seen the kid get shot in front of the school. We seen the kid get stabbed in front of the school. We got kids got stabbed in the bus when they got down to the corner on a bus stop or got down to the train station. We had incidents all the time where these kids calling violence and they, and they are terrified of coming to school. Like I said, we have to change the climate of that. So, alternative school is, is, I feel, need to be changed. Making the school an excellence and having a performance evaluated with these kids and have innovative thinking for these kids. So if you get suspended from school for a number of days, a week to three weeks, how our suspension rate goes. Um, in case, we have to have classroom training for these kids. They can enter into this other facility where there'll be officers at, so to make sure the safety of the kids for one. The second, we have, uh, different type of teaching. We have kids, uh, being taught by teachers and going by the syllabus so they can, they can pick up right where they left off at. They don't miss time. See, when the kid gets suspended and they stay home, then they enter back into the school system, they lost two to three weeks of work. And you expect for these kids to catch up. There's no catching up after that because the syllabus is designed to keep moving on and the class is gonna keep moving on. So, we have to work together, uh, on a different program. We have a thing like with YouTube. I heard kids say they like YouTube because they learn more from YouTube they do in the classroom. So we need some type of innovative thinking where they can go and have, uh, classes that's gonna be, um, video classes. We also have, um, teachers and other type of teachers. Some kids learn better with another teacher teaches subject than the teacher that they have. It's natural. It's no offense to the teacher, but sometimes kids adapt and learn in different ways. I see kids that go to summer school. In summer school, they pick them on a, on a, on a class that they had and they get an A in that class, but at that school that they attended, they got an F and failed it. So, we need different type of innovative ways to think.
I have one more question. I know I said I had one more, but one more question.
Yes, love.
Um, you were talking about, a little bit about, um, well, we were talking about community voice and having, making sure the children have a voice and to say and what happens.
There's a program right now that we working with Breaking Barriers. It's called Youth Voice. With Youth Voice, it's the program, I'll be invited, everybody to come see it, to come take a look at Breaking Barriers. It's that Saturday mornings at Bennett High School. Every Saturday morning at Bennett High School. The Breaking Barriers program is very successful. And one thing with the Youth Voice, we, we want to build teams, starting out in grade school all the way through high school where these kids have a voice, where they have, they show leadership paths and programs. With these, with, with the Youth Voice, it's designed to bring out the innermost in these kids. It's designed to understand their values. They can understand, you know, which part in life they're gonna go in, what's gonna, what's gonna be their field of study, what they want to be when they grow up. And they can speak out on it. They can speak out on the things that's happening in their society. They can speak out on the things that happen in their class. And they got friends that go through things where they can all, all sit down and talk in circles and counsel one another and help one another. Um, that's part of our Youth Voice program. Also, our kids are very special to us. And if I'm elected here on the board at large for the Buffalo Board Education, what I would do is start a sports, a sports page. I want to work with the Buffalo News. And I feel that our kids don't receive enough recognition, you know, for their, for their attributes that they do in the community. We want us, we want a, um, a special kids page set aside with the Buffalo News so that you got a child that's excelling in the school. So they can actually go to the Buffalo News, a reporter will come and do an article on them and show everybody else the type of work that they do so colleges can see this, you know, prepare for their future. You know, we, we, we want to, uh, help our colleges here. We want to promote our colleges in our area, but also other colleges they might want to go to in other, other states. And we don't want to hinder them, you know, for the best education that they can receive. And that's our goal, is to provide that best type of education they can receive. So when we look at these, these, uh, uh, when we look at this plan, so say if we got Michael Dixon propelling in football. So we want to do a report on him, what he's doing, how he's doing in class, if we want to show us his, his stats in football. Or we got a young Jacob that's propelling in basketball, we want clips of him so that Division One colleges across the country can see him. So that, uh, and we got a, a young girl who might play the piano or be a, uh, might be, want to be a world-class swimmer. We want this person to be advertised in the community so that everybody know this child and that's gonna bring a self of wealth in this child. When they see their self in the paper or when other kids seeing the child be interviewed and their faces in the paper and that paper is hanging up on the wall in their school, uh, it's gonna propel them to do the same. So we want a special sports section right here with the Buffalo News, uh, to, to show that our children are worth something.
So it sounds like you have a platform about each one reach one, teach one, whether you get the colleges involved, you want community voice where the children voices are heard. They're part of the resolution and implementing programs. Sounds like you, um, also appreciate Dr. Cash's, some of his programming and willing to work with him as a board member. Um, so there are a lot of things, the satellite police stations within the schools to help build relationships, form relationships. So that's what I'm, I'm, I'm hearing from you, what you're talking and what you can bring to the table, among others, Doc.
Yes, uh, I wish I had more time to talk, but one thing I want to do is promote Dr. Cash's multi-tier system. The multi-tier system is designed that the teachers, the principals, every, and the students, everybody has a chance to receive some type of counseling. They run into a problem that they have somebody they can actually talk to. That's very important. They have somebody that can help them through this problem. I believe their principals should get together and talk or talk amongst one another, you know. Uh, we can always point out the bad things that's happening in the school systems. But, we never talk about the good things that's happening in the school system. We have to, we have to reflect and show what these, what's going on within the schools. We have to, uh, with this multi-tier system, if a teacher's having a hard time with a student, they can talk to other teachers, they can talk to counselors, they can bring in counselors to help reflect on, help reflect and change the attitude of that child. If it's something that we can do to help change the attitude of the child, I know from teaching, I seen kids, one of my kids, he came in and went to sleep every single day. Every day he comes in and go to sleep. And instead of, at first I started to wake up, wake up, wake up, and then kids like, let him sleep, let him sleep. I had no idea that he was out selling drugs at night. The kids didn't tell me. And then the kid didn't come to school for three days. And then they, somebody told me that he was selling drugs. We tried to reach out to the parents, reach out to the kids. Uh, when he came back to school, I borrowed some clean shirts because the shirts was always dirty. Uh, this is his personal story and I, I feel so bad. I'm not gonna name this child because he was caught up in a robbery and he was shot and killed. And this was his sophomore year of high school. And it was no way that I wouldn't, I would know that he was gonna be involved in a robbery. But, um, I remember them acknowledging over the loudspeaker saying that, you know, to give a moment of silence because he lost another child. And I don't want any teacher, any principal, or anybody to have to go through that. You know, it's something that's touching and I feel that we can do more to help with those type of situations.
Okay. So we're gonna have to wrap this up. Facebook Live, we don't want to go on and on, but what, what do you want for other people to, to... Uh, we're about to kick off this campaign.
Okay, okay. Let's get to the campaign. Let's get to the campaign. Where are my petitions at?
Your petitions.
Do you get my petitions? Our petitions. Okay, petitions going out tomorrow. Everybody, please. Uh, I'm gonna have a couple of slides where you can come and sign petitions. Here at 1370 William Street, because the weather is so inclement, I don't want people walking, going door to door, getting frostbite and, uh, and getting caught up in this weather. And I, I, I think that's, that's inhumane. So, at 1370 William Street, you can come here, uh, from nine o'clock in the morning till seven, six o'clock at night, seven o'clock at night, I believe, to sign our petitions. Look for this petition, Terrence Hurd. This is, uh, our petition right here. I feel that I'm the best possible candidate for, uh, for this job, for the things that are posted. If you're just now coming on, if you're just now listening, I was a court liaison, I was probation officer. I was, uh, a former teacher here in the city of Buffalo in high school and grade school. I also, um, ran a day reporting center, also, I say correctional officer. I also started the GIBS program, the Georgia incarcerated voice and encouraging students where the prisoner actually came onto the high school setting. And also, if you just came on, you know that I worked with the Breaking Barriers. And also, uh, if you just came on, you know that I worked with the Breaking Barriers Program with the, uh, with two hundred young men. It's the second year, two hundred young men that we mentoring. And also with the WIP Program, uh, that's where Reverend Gene Copeland, where we mentor over four, five hundred kids already, uh, in this type, in this program. Uh, where we had a hundred men that came to the high school to help, to help mentor kids and a hundred women that came in to the high school to help mentor kids. We work with agencies, we work with Epic, every voice influences. And we also, um, uh, to, to review the work, the Boys and Girls Club. We did things with, uh, one of my, uh, my, my, my fan favorites, Andre Reed, Reed, uh, Reed the Reed Program. Uh, we also, uh, worked with, um, other type of programs. So many, that so many the name right now, Success Look Like Me with Jennifer Parker and the Buffalo School, um, Board. Um, it's initiative program. So I think I'm the best possible person that can, uh, be voted in for this position for the Buffalo School Board. And I believe that when you sign this petition, look for my name, Terrence Hurd at large. We need your support. We definitely need your support. It's gonna be also located on Jefferson and, um, Jefferson and, um, I'm sorry, Fillmore and Main Street. Fillmore and Main Street, you can sign my petition here, Fillmore and Main Street. Over at Destiny's Restaurant. You're gonna see a petition board gonna be there and the people there at Destiny's welcome you to come in and sign a petition. Uh, it's gonna be a couple of other places that we gonna have, that we gonna post that, uh, people are calling me now saying, I'm looking, I see it right now, saying that you can call and put your petitions here also. So I'll be letting you know in the near future where we can put your petitions at. I will be coming out doing signings. I'm, I'm asking you to, um, to help support this cause because I'm gonna support your children in every district, in every, in, in every category in the best way possible. You want somebody that cares. Remember, the Buffalo School Board only pays five thousand dollars a year. The position only paid five thousand dollars a year. But I really contribute my time, work with my wife to work out things, to work through our struggles so that I can help serve one of the school boards so that we can help the kids. Uh, if anybody have any questions, please, uh, just inbox me, call me, go to TerrenceHurd.com. Uh, it shows more about my background and my history. They can also like me on Facebook. And, um, we have a meeting on Thursday. Oh, yeah, and come support this Friday over at the Oak Room, this Friday evening at the Oak Room. Where we have a table set up, meet us there, come meet the candidates. Um, and, uh, that was sponsored by Duncan Kirkwood, to come meet the candidates. Um, uh, he, he invited me to come, so I'm gonna come. And if there's an opportunity for me to meet you, um, in our place, wherever, wherever we're at, I'll meet you there. If you want me to speak or talk to any type of forum, any type of program, any, um, any groups or anything like that. If you got a child that wanna be part of our group, Breaking Barriers or the WIP Program, uh, the Boys and Girls Club. If you wanna, if you got a child that needs support, give us a call, let us know and we'll be there for that child. That's why I'm running for this position here on the school board.
Okay. All right.
Am I done?
That's it. Thank you.